I mean that I, the, you know, these, all the department heads have been provided a username and password. Now, I'm not sure if that information was actually passed on to you from Travis. I don't, I don't know about that, but those, okay.
It was passed on, I was told it got, uh, cut off for, because it's Travis, not for me, so they, they discontinued it, so. Uh, well. It was passed on, it's just, it wasn't my name.
But, but, uh, but, let, let, let me just say that username and password should still be available, uh, to, to log into the site. And as far as, as that goes, this isn't about this site or, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be this site. I'm just saying, whatever city site the Camden, the, whatever website the city of Camden uses, this information should be posted on. And this is, the, the only information is something that's, hey, already available, because it's sent to us. So, it requires one person total to, to simply upload this. It could be anyone.
Is that fair? Again, um, thanks, Don, for, for jumping up and speaking up. Um, I, I, I took a little pony and, and, and talked to some of our city workers up here.
Mm-hmm.
And just asked about this, and, and, and they feel like Scott, you know, um, putting a little bit more on them. And I'm looking at, um, where in this revolution, uh, requiring certain material. Uh, required, I mean, that's a, that's a mandate, you know, when, when, when the city is going to be required to put this material on, on there, that's a mandate, and then you got, show, post this stuff, you know. And so, if we pass this resolution, it's got to be done by somebody. Like you said, it's good, transparency and everything, and you just, your last statement said, anybody can do it.
Right.
So, can you do it, or would that be a conflict?
I have some.
Or dangerous?
I mean, I have, but it's something that I would happily do, but I just, here, here's the problem with me doing it every single time. You know, as, as some of you will aware, I don't have a perfect attendance record at these meetings, but that is.
Why do you have to do it every single time?
What I'm saying is, it, it's something that can be shared between different people. The same person doesn't necessarily have to do it every single time. Now, it'd be a good idea to have a primary person do it.
Right.
You can do it, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety percent of the time, but in the event that for some reason, you know, that person is unable to do it, it's good to have a backup plan.
It's like shouting, somebody call nine one one, and not pointing at a single individual, say, go call nine one one. That's like standing in the crowd and first stand, somebody call nine one one. If you don't tell the individual, that's the first thing you teach them, first aid, you go call nine one one. So, what you're saying, yeah, you can do that.
I remember, you know, it's gonna be, it's not my job.
Uh-huh. I'm, I'm just saying, is this a good idea to have this information available? I, I think that's the first question that we need to answer, you know? And then, let's figure out how to make it happen, if it's a good idea. But I guess the question is, is having this information so that these people out here can be truly informed and prepared for what we're discussing regarding city business, is that a good idea? I guess that's the, I guess that's the great question, and then, everything else, we can figure out after that.
Not with, not with, uh, not once we put it in law, we need, we, we need some type. If it's anybody's, if it's, uh, if it's anybody's job, it's nobody's job. I remember that in church, you just expect something to just happen. If you, if you don't designate a delegation, sometimes things will fall. And if, if, the word requiring is needed, and the word challenged, which are actually technical types of words. We're writing these as rules and guidelines for ourselves for a reason. These are not just suggestions. If it was a suggestion, we would not put it in my.
Well, if it's a suggestion, if it was just based on a suggestion, we could have already done this. But apparently, his will is not there to do it.
I think we jumped on here at that time, okay, uh, you can have that. Uh, let me catch you and I come right to you.
Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am, you can go on.
Uh, my question, like I said at the council meeting, I think the resolution is a good one. The transparency is good. The problem I have is the problem I see that needs to be fixed before that, before you get into this resolution. What is the city's official website? Because Explore Camden cannot be the city's official website if it's not owned by the city, which it is not. It is not owned or run by the city, that cannot be an official city website. That is an issue that I think needs to be tackled before you guys are putting public documents on an official city website.
Well, to that, I would say, firstly, there already are official and public documents on the Explore Camden webpage, because another administration decided that it was the official Camden website. Now, no, no, with all due respect, you didn't make that decision, and I, I respect that. If you want to change it, you know, the, I guess the last mayor decided that it would be Explore Camden, or that some, a previous administration decided that the official site could be Explore Camden. If you want to change that, you know, I guess feel free. Uh, I'm just saying, wherever that's, whatever we decide, whatever the administration decides the official city of Camden website is, I'm just saying, it's a good idea that this information be fine.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I thought what the intent was, and the way it's written, is that we're not talking about a budget document. What we're talking about is there's one PDF file that all council members receive once a month, one PDF file. Now, one file needs to be uploaded somewhere, and that's, so, and maybe we're gonna say, you know, we've got documents still on there, but the intent is, those documents are ordered in the packet. What we're really dealing with is the council packet, and it refers from the ordinance to the council packet. Because the council packet that the members get, that needs to be posted somewhere. So, that's, that's kind of not saying we've got other things that have, have to go on there to keep it up to date, or update projects, or update even pictures on there, update employees. It's just this one PDF file per month needs to be placed somewhere where people can see it. Uh, but I would say, uh, I think Michelle is correct, that we need to look at, what is overall goal of the city's internet media presence, I guess the thing is they call it. Right now, the explorecannon.com is free, so we have a free service, we have a website, we've changed all our emails, and we all had an email that said explorecannon.com. Um, we kind of just started doing that the last three or four months. We don't pay for that. That is a matter of just, we want to put, put something on there, we can have, some of us put something on there, and that thing. You would show us a service that's completely forty-six hundred dollars, that they can assist with that. I would, if that's forty-six hundred, we actually pay, that that would be a similar service, and, and maybe better than not having to have someone do it. Uh, I would get you to hear, since the fire department, the police department don't use this, what is in their budget to update the media presence, how, how are they handling it? Because we don't need to have four separate, uh, ways of doing this. I mean, it sounds like they've got explorecannon.com, and as I say, I think those email addresses have been out there at Camden for probably two to three years, and I don't think that most employees knew they had such an email address. And I think, uh, people went online, I think emails went into the, uh, internet and kind of just floated out there until, here within the last half a year, we started actually trying to get those emails.
Let, let me just say, uh, respond to the email addresses. So, basically, they were set up on the site when it was created, and any email address that, you know, if somebody, uh, for instance, said, you know, email code enforcement, uh, at the time, uh, I don't know if code enforcement's email has changed, but at the time, uh, it was set up to forward to what the email address that tried. So, if somebody, uh, clicked the link on the website, you know, yes, it, it sent the email to the codeenforcement@explorecannon.com. Uh, however, it also forwarded that email onto, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what the address is off the top of my head, but it forwarded to the address that he was using. Same thing with, uh, uh, the mayor's email, same thing with city clerk, and, you know, basically, there were a lot of non-standard email addresses that, that basically, we just said, okay, send it here, but forward it on to the email address that they're currently using. And, uh, the hope was, at, at some point, the migration to the new ones would happen at the cities, you know, when, when the city could.
And I think it's a good thing, I mean, I think it's great, you got mayor, explorecannon, explorecannon.com, city attorney, explorecannon. That's good, maybe it's not going to change it, it's just that if we change something like that, you know, we need to get, we have one common thread, I mean, this is kind of like Queen City to Washington versus, you know, another, some way through later. The question is, what is our honor going to be, and ought to be throughout the whole city? And, uh, so I would be interested, like I said, at least the board had that on the system. I mean, I, I would have the budget for it, I would dare to do it, the fire department, do something, is that working well, is that good? But we ought to have somehow a word combined, and then we're going to have one city that's.
What's this problem, sorry, Chris? Well, since we is discussing, that's a good question, uh, trying to find. I mean, Bell or Chief Ash, who do keep your website up and?
So, we had one before, the city of Camden had one, we've had one for YM, and I have a person, one person designated, that the two second does.
I think it's that my phone, we've got a lieutenant that does all our tech stuff, radios, computers, he does the website, camdenf p dot com, he keeps updating information on there all the time. I asked him the other day, I think it's three hundred something dollars for five years, little side.
Your position is called what? Your residence is filling in a gap, right? You have an actual position, right?
Yeah, first of all, public relations.
Public relations.
But just to be clear, they do have more responsibilities than just updating the website, right?
Oh, oh, most definitely, most definitely, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Bell, this does need to be public knowledge. And I'm not an internet expert, so I took the liberty of talking to one over the last couple of weeks about this very thing. And my big concern was explorecannon.com is not our .gov address. But in talking with this expert, even though explorecannon.com is owned by someone else technically, uh, no judge in the world would then take it away from the city of Camden, because it's quite obviously the city of Camden's website. So, I don't have a problem with using that, especially if we can take the camdenarkansas.gov and point it to the Explore Camden, so when you go and click on it, that's where it goes. My only other concern, uh, after listening to Scott speak earlier, is user password security. We have an ex-employee that still has a username and password that's exit, uh, usable.
At the time, I was not.
That's a security breach all day long.
At the time, I was not, uh.
Well, I, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just saying, we need to make sure that when someone leaves the, the service of the city, and, and this isn't a jab at any ex-employee in particular or in general, uh, that stuff gets changed.
Well, I know.
That, that, that's all I got, that, that's all I got.
One of your concerns, camdenar.gov does forward to explorecannon.com right now.
Right, right.
Uh, currently, though, it's, and, and this is just, it's gonna get into a little bit technical, but let me just say this. It's kind of a, a little bit of a hack. We could not get in touch with the, uh, with the people, because technically, uh, camdenar.gov is administered by the state. It's administered by AR.gov, you know, because it's a subdomain of AR.gov. Uh, so, the issue that we had was, we, we, when we first did Explore Camden, uh, we, um, we, we, we got the website up, and we went to go and try to find the people who pointed, uh, Camden, you know, the, the people at the state who could point it over to us, you know, because at the time, that's what the current administrator, administration wanted. Uh, the, uh, problem is, uh, we, when, you know, I, I could go back and find my emails, uh, you know, it's been a couple of years now, but, uh, uh, I, I literally tried to get help from, you know, the current administration, they pointed me to some people, they couldn't help me. Uh, I went, you know, I checked with our state senators, they tried to call some people, those people couldn't help me. Uh, I even, you know, I know Matthew Shepard personally, the speaker of the Arkansas House, he got his people involved in it. Those people couldn't help me. So, you know, Mayor, Mayor, if, if you can find the people who, who can get camdenar.gov changed, uh, you know, we'll, we'll point it, you know, we'll, I'll help you point it to wherever you want it, if you can find those people. Uh, I, I, you know, to us, to anybody else, because right now, it points, because the previous place, the previous hosting space, uh, we, it wasn't hosted with us previously, uh, the, the site before this one. It was hosted, uh, with another company's server, and the, uh, the reason it's pointing there right now is because there is basically a little, it's simple, it's a little redirect script that whenever somebody goes to camdenar.gov, it says, go here instead. Uh, and basically, that little redirect script is the only thing keeping it from pulling up a blank page, uh, for camdenar.gov. So, I, I have tried multiple times to contact the state, and this was, you know, not as, uh, you know, this was working for JAC Productions. Uh, you know, I tried multiple times and, you know, could never get past that. So, uh, whether, whether you want it to point to Explore Camden, or whether you want it to point to anyone else uh, to do something else with it, uh, I would, uh, very much recommend trying to find contacts at the state. Man, you know, hopefully, the mayor can get, uh, further than I did, uh, because, yeah, uh, that is something we do need to get control of.
I want to do the speed Scott did, don't find no more work.
Let me put a fork in this and call it done. Uh, like I said, this thing, it's, it's a good idea to have this information out there, but the way this is written and proposed, I don't, I, I think it just kind of opens up a bag that's getting tied together very well, uh, about who's gonna do it, how it's gonna be done, some other things that ought to be worked out. Now, in my view, if you're gonna have a webpage that has good information for people to look at, you ought to have a recording of our meetings on it, you ought to have a recording of the planning commission meetings on it. If you're not gonna have a full-blown deal, don't do it. Uh, number two, uh, putting out what's coming up for the next agenda is one thing, but sometimes, we give three revised agendas. Now, if you, you know, and if you can't get it together the first time, who's gonna get confused about it? And a lot of times, what the resolution that was out there, what I wouldn't want people to have to get confused about is a resolution that, or ordinance that was proposed, got totally changed before we passed it. That updated one is the one that needs to go in final package and do away with the, the other one. So, there needs to be some management in there, so you don't get confused about what was sent out there and what finally got adopted, that's the real rule, so. I'm for doing this, but I think it'll be more inclusive and, and more thought out. Also, uh, Don Stewart has got this thing, this laser fish system that's installed too. I don't know if that would work with, would it interface with?
The laser fish wouldn't work for that, but the other page I included is with municipal meetings. We'll take care of all of that.
Is that the one that's forty-six hundred dollars?
Everything with a price tag.
So, here's, here's another thing. I said earlier, if it's anybody's job, it's nobody's job. So, we could consider an IT person, or we could bump the money that the police department is already paying, and have one person, if we just said, any of us have access, any of us have code, that's a lot of stuff. If you already getting your emails from there, all of us don't need to be able to go on the website and over again, right? That's amazing, people leave here, and they're just not happy. And, uh, they have access to do things to you, so if we, if we, whatever is that guy, which I thought that's what it was, I thought only two people have code, I didn't know everybody could go on, because I don't, if I have a code, I'm unaware of exactly what it is. I was, I was told, I thought.
There, there.
I'm almost finished.
Okay, sir.
I was told Amy and Travis were our, were our persons who did that.
Mm-hmm.
And because those were the two, that's who we were counting on at that time. And I didn't know that I could just go on and do, uh, something on there, and so I started doing something different, because like you, I was one of the main fighters for transparency when it first came on. I felt like if people knew, they would come, if they felt involved, and, and they could engage, because they had information. I felt like they would, and these show up for things that dealt with things. But those people knew what tonight was about right over there with the, with the workshop. If they knew exactly, there was no, only a minute that my league would have just come to just say, I'm protecting my neighborhood or something like that. So, it was shame, but I would never argue against the, the transparency element of it. What I'm saying is, we have to at some point answer the journalistic question of who brought them about how, because when actually putting something is right.
Right.
And that's why I think it's important that we flesh out whose responsibility is it, because I can't, I can't just say, well, we're gonna get it done, because that's the right thing to do, we gotta assign it. But if that means we need to get an IT person, or if that means that we need to bump up someone else's, we can't say anybody in City Hall can do this job, because anybody in City Hall should not have access to that. Some people quit, some people, you know, it's just too much.
But let, let me just say, real quick, I'm sorry, Don, uh, okay, so there are, I have to go back and count, but I want to say there are between five and seven total passwords, user accounts that can get into that site. The reason there are different accounts is, it allows, uh, it allows the, any updates or changes to be tracked to a specific account. So, for instance, when, you know, for instance, when JAC Productions goes in there and updates, you know, the, like I said during the meeting, we update the events page for the AMP, we have one specific user account that we use. Whenever, uh, Travis would, you know, go in there and do any updates for whatever, he had another one that, that he would use. And the, and the reason for that is, it allows, you know, if somebody were to go in there and publish something bad, you know, it allows us to be able to say, okay, this is the account that is used to do it. Uh, there are all, and like I said, there are only five to seven, there was, I have to go back and check, uh, exactly. Uh, Mayor, and let me just say this, I think this is something that should be done. Uh, I think that it's something we do need to work at to figure it out, and I'm willing to work with you in any way, uh, possible to get this done. Uh, but the reason I think that, the reason that I think that words like shell and require is because if it's not required, and it's just a suggestion, which means, you know, you know, it's like, a law's not a law, it's not a requirement.
That's what I'm saying, it's who's shit.
Yeah, exactly. You know, it's like, hey, it's table right now, let's keep the table, and, you know, if, if you're willing to talk with me, I'll, like I said, I will train, I'll do whatever, and I'll, you know, I'll, I'll volunteer my time to train whoever I need to, to, to fix any issues that I need to, to, to see that this happens, because I, you know, it's something I hear, and it's something I feel that needs to be done versus.
Yeah, anything more?
Yes?
Well, I know, just really briefly, uh, for those of you that know, your municipal meeting is going on right now, it's rated virtual, if y'all doing that at some point, pretty handy, dandy, I thought. Uh, one of the things that is, that is, uh, is before the legislature, is we've had a constant problem with need to advertise for sealed bids, and for things, every time we gotta do sealed bids, we've got to spend three hundred dollars advertising. The question really being, decline newspapers and the increase of social media, don't you really read the newspaper to see an ad? You know, we're taking sealed bids for this, why we have to do this? And we have constantly had to answer, we know no one's gonna see it, we're gonna run this ad, spend the two hundred fifty dollars, and then we're really gonna put something on Facebook, and that's where you're gonna get responses from. So, there is, ending before the legislature for this session, uh, an act that would allow municipalities to post it to their website instead of having to go through paying publication fee, which I think everybody would say, you know, that's great, because we're spending quite a bit on publication for various things, and all the, all the commissioners that do any sealed bids are doing that in the sales of property. Uh, so we would save all that income to do that, and this is looking a little bit towards the future, but to do that, we are gonna have to have probably more than just what this was envisioning, where you've just got somebody putting one PDF. I mean, that is talking about somebody that's gonna have to probably maintain the website, do more than just individual, uh, department heads just kind of doing it on their own. So, I would say that's coming, as a way of saving the land authentication fee. It just means we're gonna have to start thinking that really the city needs to budget for IT, uh, social media, web, uh, web presence. That's just a part of good business, that's a part of being a city. Uh, and so I think that is gonna be coming down the road at some point.
Good. If you don't mind me speaking there, right quick, just me and Chief are sitting over here talking about, you said that I hope it does go through.
That's right.
Because just on this new hire test we give, the ads alone, just for newspaper, twelve hundred dollars. I think you said we spent around.
Right, right.
Just for that test for that Saturday, so you're talking about saving us a lot, the city a lot.
We need all the legislature, that's, that's a list on, that's on.
So, so it doesn't count for like where they have to publish the city budget each year?
Correct.
Like for all those.
Correct, they take, you know.
No.
And so, you know, city has been pushing to say, you know, this is really not a good use of time, very money, and very rare for people to really get their information that way anymore. So, at least they're presenting it, uh, we'll see, you know, if we take, talk to the legislators and try to get it. At least there's a move on to do it finally, which is a step in the right direction, but it is gonna require us to. When we could do that, if we can't get rid of the newspaper, even if they pass all that, if we don't have a website, and don't have someone to actually put it on there and somebody to maintain it. So, we're saving a thousand dollars, twelve hundred, but, but yes, we need to be, uh, putting something aside to be able to say, we can actually have a website, be able to put that stuff on there. I think it's a lot cheaper, but eventually, we need to have.
They give those tests about three times a year?
Department.
So, yes, sir?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, two, three times a year, so that's two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, two or three times a year.
Yeah, but we would have to do it more, because when they don't pass, we still have to do more.
Right, so it, I could say that's a lot of money.
But even if a person is part-time as an IT, and you did, uh, so many hours a week, and you chose those hours, you were still at a balancing hour, saving money if you did IT at part, part-time. Uh, I would, uh, really like to.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
The municipal system will also enable things like that to be put online. It's simple, different departments could use it, one button publishes to the website. You just get the links that is the way that our codes are right now, the little links that you put in course. They can set up another link, and you can publish everything to the website. And that's forty-six hundred dollars a year versus a part-time person or bringing in a full-time IT.
I think both options have their strengths and weaknesses, just from, you know, it's, it's something we should definitely discuss going forward. Both options.
We're in the workshop, isn't that? If you drop it there, I'm fired, because we got another big item on there, Jim. What I'm saying, I hope we have to do, and not alone, so if they're setting on your heart, how can you toss it around?
You know, uh, I, I'm not against having a, a part-time person, or, or, or increasing someone's salary a little bit to say, okay, this is also on yours, and, you know, I know, like I said, it, it, the technological knowledge to do what we currently have, I know, uh, I'm not sure, you know, I, I'd have to like see a demo of, of what she's suggesting, you know, and, and I'm speaking just as a professional, you know, has done this for a living.
It's municipal dot com.
Municipal?
Yes, sir. It's in our package.
Uh, do you know, uh, do you know if they have a online, uh, online demo?
Yes.
That shows their system?
Yeah, we got it, uh, weeks ago.
Okay.
And, and not only do, do we do one or the other, we could combine them, if we gave someone a piece more of a salary, and they had the forty-six hundred dollars, uh, at, uh, access to that, then everybody would know one place to go, or we could get everything set up yet.
I, I think that's a idea to look forward to.
Is there any more discussion on Resolution Twenty-One Twenty? It's still under the table until we bring it back sometime.
Can I call you next week?
Yes, sir, you can call me. Our employee compensation plan is item number four, we've finished with number two. Item number four. Who do you want to call up first?
I, uh, I saw several things, but there was one thing that I really wanted to ask about, so I'm trying to, trying to make some, you know, real quick. Uh, and that was, uh, regarding compensation for the parks departments. Um, so I don't know if this is Jim, or Kevin, or whoever, but.
Let's talk to Scott.
Uh, so, in 2020, according to the, uh, the budget I had sit to me, the parks director was budgeted forty-one thousand. We have five parks maintainers, and a total of, uh, twenty, uh, roughly a hundred and twenty-two thousand, which worked out to about twenty-five, twenty-four thousand four hundred per person, if, if, you know, assuming we paid them all the exact same. same. That, that would be an average per person wage. And then we had three part-time for $47,028, which, you know, like I said, going back to assuming we paid everyone the exact same amount, that would work out to roughly $15,676 per person. Looking at the new one that was sent to me, and basically, it's saying that the Parks Director is currently budgeted at $39,686, which is actually a reduction in pay for the Parks Director. We have a Parks Superintendent, which is a new position that's been added, which kind of steals from one, basically, one of the Parks Maintainers has been shifted to the, to Parks, to the role of Parks Superintendent. They've gotten a bump in pay to $32,100, and we have $91,520 left for the other four maintainers, which comes out to $22,880. And then, and then the, the three part-times actually got a small bump to roughly $16,588 per person, assuming we pay them all the same. My, my problem is, and the thing I wanted to ask about was why the reduction in pay for the Parks Director, as well as the roughly $1,500 a year, you know, average reduction in pay for the maintainers?
Give him just a minute. First, that's going to probably be something that Director Franklin is going to come over and speak on in just a moment. But I do want to say, first of all, when we see that number, we can pay up to that.
Right, right, right. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
If, if I remember correctly, Mr. Mayor, when we created the Parks Superintendent position, we took some of the salary from the Parks Director, because that Superintendent was going to be taking a load off of their plate. And in order to create that position, to make the Parks Maintainer one position to Superintendent desirable for an employee to take, and the extra workload, it was just the compromise, I believe, we came up with.
All right. Does that satisfy you?
Well, there's still the question of the reduction in pay for the actual workers from, just from the map that I'm seeing, which, you know, basically, it reduced the, the workers from, you know, from five before, but it, you know, even given that, it's, it's, you know, if you were to, you know, if you were to take four people, pay them the same amount from, from all we have budgeted, it would be a slight reduction in pay per year. I just want them.
It would be the same amount of people. The Superintendent would still be working. He would still be doing the share of work that he was doing part of this. And I think the guys, the lower echelon guys, guys, they're still getting a raise this year. They're still, it may not reflect on here, but am I right in? The lower guys are still moving up, and the Superintendent will still do work. I think 10 years ago, the Parks Director or the Parks Supervisor, that department only had to cut their ass in the parks. Well, now, they maintain five fields, two softball fields and three baseball fields, which is a lot more work. If you're not a baseball guy, you wouldn't get it. I'm a baseball guy. That is a lot of work to maintain a baseball field, and now we're doing five of them. There's potentially a chance that we may have a baseball league this year.
Not this year.
Lawrence Club is in a little bit of bind, and I was told we had a ton of people, I guess years ago. I had seen it. This is just working out, but I have some groups that want to actually do a baseball league for the city. I think it can be great. The Superintendent also has a disc ball league now that we got to deal with. It's more things going on now than went on 10 years ago. They called us for more responsibilities. So, that's why they changed this.
You know, I made this interjection for a segment of history. It doesn't really, it doesn't really matter by now, but you were asking about the different salaries and things like that. Many years ago, if you, if you don't mind just touching on a little bit, many years ago, I think our directors were more, were more even than not anymore. So, that explains a little bit of the bit that he's experiencing. Now, we've been trying to.
And maybe I'm not making myself clear, but my main concern is over the position of Parks Maintainer one.
Let me.
Okay, and maybe I'm reading something wrong.
There's confusion. The budget previously was set up on what was expected to be paid. They were never paid that.
Okay, so we didn't have five people that were made that sound.
But this year's budget, because we've got so much going on, we basically have said, "What am I paying that person?" So, that's why you're saying change.
Okay, all right. Like I said, I saw, I saw a very concerning discrepancy in the numbers.
Valid question, but so much has changed in the process.
Right, which, which, right, that is my question.
So, we're trying to squeeze out as much of the fat, if you will, that was in the budget, was very little, and that's why you're saying.
Okay, okay, great. So, so just, just so, they will be paid on average at least what we're seeing in 2021 on this budget? Okay, great.
So, I actually do address specifically some of that history, but when we got, when we got our last directors, because of this inexperience, I think we dropped them a little bit. And so, we never have brought our redirecter up to enough place, even though we cost them and then add in more things. And we'll call them the September to remember for the record, if I can do a little commercial. September to remember is what we're going to call it. Our basketball court that was promised to the young people at Karnes Park is going down in the second week. And also, they'll be helping with, I think all they're doing is baseball fields. We're getting ready to do some of the streets, and you'll get a note tonight, up to $150,000 per board. You'll get to help choose some of those streets. We've already looked at the street you gave us. Now, you get another choice based on what your constituents are asking for. And there's one more thing. Oh, and the solar panels are getting ready to get started in the middle of September. So, while some were sleeping, we were hard at work. All right, September to remember. All right, now, but when we dropped him, we just let it fall. That position matched up. So, we're working at it. There'll just be a big jump now, and they kind of stepped on it. All right, yes, sir.
I'm just going to ask back to that, those guys from Festival Bell was talking about, that, you know, they're, these are the guys that we've talked about a bunch that were at $10 an hour, and that's going to bump up the person a year to $11 an hour. So, it looks like for the whole, regardless of which category, then, if those were hourly workers there, it looks like you'd have an increase in their, you know, individual pay.
And what?
Well, I mean.
What, what we've done is, is from that budget that was set at a certain level, we never achieved this, and we went back and we said, "We're getting an increase," but we're setting it to where the dollar begins. So, for example, Parks Director, whichever one was, let me look at it. So, the intended budget, let's say, I didn't bring up last year's budget, but let's say it's in there at $41,000. Well, we weren't paying $41,000. And we also had a budget of, let's say, $200,000. We never paid $200,000 because we had attrition to like 30%. So, when you look at this total budget, we look at attrition, we look at paying the actual level we're going to pay people, and then we, we increase the movement rate. So, there's a whole bunch of moves in Parks there and processes. And so, I was just looking at it, I can find it here, and regular salaries for Parks, in 2018, we made $107,000. We made $113,000, and this year, we're estimating $156,000.
Well, I was just looking at the, you know, the five guys, $122,000, that we flexed into this, and this four guy for number one.
Which, that's what I was asking about.
Well, that's a grand, grand total for a group. I was talking about the four guys that are running the mower. But anyway, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll understand it better later.
Yeah, that's what I was just asking about. Basically, what he's saying is he had, those people never actually, they didn't, we never actually paid out $122,000. So, so this more reflects what we actually paid out for those positions.
Exactly.
Although, I would like to just bring something up and something you might want to consider. You know, I have spoke with Director Franklin about this and about certain issues of getting things, you know, done in a timely manner, grass cutting and all that. And it might be something that we might want to look at, possibly trying to find at least a part-time crew, you know, during the summer to help with grass cutting and, you know, because, you know, we have, there has been some issues with, with that happening in a timely manner, I would, I would say, this past summer. And if, you know, if they need a little more help during it, it might be something, at least, you know, find some money in the budget for a seasonal crew, if, if nothing else, you know, get some high schoolers or, or whatever, some kind of seasonal crew to, to help with some of those tasks, so that the more full-time guys can, can be on to actually upgrading and fixing stuff instead of just being behind the mower all day. Might be something we want to look at.
I would agree with that to a certain extent. I do want all the help I can get. I'll give you a little bit of numbers behind what we do. Bring what cemetery takes three days ago. Sandy Beach, when we can cut it, just a three or four-day cut. Riverfront is a three-day cut. But we went through two weeks already. We hadn't touched Karnes Park, we hadn't touched Out of Florida Park, we hadn't got much trash downtown. When First Friday is doing their thing, we get called from different groups to take this there. They do a lot of different things other than just cut grass. When it gets really hot, like it is now, some of these guys go home some days, and I worry about having heatstroke. It would be good. Certain months, we did have some guys that'd come in and work just make it five months. Wintertime, we wouldn't do it. But from June, July, August, September, we could use a few guys to go do it. Again, we do a lot of other things that cut grass. The good thing about COVID, which is no good thing, we didn't do First Friday. We had to have somebody First Friday, pretty much every Friday, every bit we had here. Down at Joe Fenton's, we got guys working. Parks Center, we moved everything to Parks Center. We helped them do it. We do a lot of things that we don't get paid to do, so to speak. Some things happen off the clock, and we got to come back in evening time and go do this, that, and the other. So, I would be happy to get some assistance for four months out of the year. I would love to have some help from somebody.
Yes, sir.
How much is your, have you increased your overtime budget this year?
Uh, yes. Not, not that much. And you referred to Parks or overall?
Overall.
Uh, overall, what I try to do to decrease overtime budget is this. Normally, we have a storm, and the director would get a call, whoever he has a call, they'd bring the crew out. Well, I'd get up in the middle of the night, and I'd go look at it, see if I can do it myself, I do. And I don't call anybody. I do it, push it over the next day, and we go pick it up.
Well, I'm all for it. I think your overtime budget needs to be more. I mean, I'm looking at your sanitation worker, he's making $10.70 an hour on this budget. That's.
And he's been here for around 10 years.
And I think that needs to go up like 12. I think yours needs to be adjusted quite a bit, more than it is. That's what me and Marvin have always fought for.